Okay, welcome everyone in the audience here with us this evening and welcome to those that are joining us at home. This is the May 29th meeting of the Coleson City Council, regular session. It's a different night for us, it's Tuesday night, given the holiday, we're on an unusual time. But if we could all rise, I'll read a brief invocation, we have a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. We ask for your continued guidance as we deliberate issues before us tonight and help us to recognize the importance of each individual we serve, keeping us mindful of those in need. Tonight, we especially ask for your blessing and presence be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, state, and city. Guide them and protect their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this evening we have two special presentations, the first being setback allowances for nonconforming lots in single-family residential districts. Kevin, do you have a presentation that you'd like to give?
I don't have a formal PowerPoint, I can just talk about it briefly.
That'd be great.
As you all remember, back in March, we presented this concept for relief in single-family residential districts to the side yard setback. On a sliding scale, depending on what zoning district you were in, you could get relief, starting at 15 feet down to 10, so forth. This has gone before the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals at this point, they have commented on it. We took your comments during that work session and have made it 10 feet across the board for every zoning district in the city, every single-family residential district in the city. And that's the big change when we present it to you at your next council meeting for formal consideration. Additionally, the Board of Zoning Appeals had a great comment that we took, and that's basically to ensure that a building width, a width of a house, cannot be wider for a nonconforming lot than what would be permitted on a minimally conforming lot. And I know that's confusing, but in essence, you're allowed 120-foot wide lots in the RS district, our largest lots. You're allowed 80 feet of envelope, for lack of a better word, to build. You can have an 80-foot wide house. For a lot that is 110 feet, a nonconforming lot, taking advantage of our new provision, they could build a house up to 90 feet wide. So we want to make sure that they aren't given an advantage based upon their nonconformity, and we'll protect that with that provision.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, well, members of council, we just wanted to let you know what the Planning Commission and the BZAs deliberations on this have been. This is scheduled for your next meeting for a work session, but since you, or, excuse me, public hearing, since you'd previously had a work session on this, we thought we could accomplish our role tonight by simply giving you a brief staff update as to where we are.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate that. Okay, next, Randy, you have some new employees you'd like to introduce?
I have two, one of which knows I'm about to do this and one of which does not. The first is Scott Holloway. Come on up, Scott. Members of council, you're familiar with Mr. Holloway. He is a leader in our fire and rescue community, but he has an additional hat since the last time you've seen him. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wheeler, I was, I applied for the position in fleet maintenance and I was lucky to receive it. Been there three weeks now and love every minute of it. I've been in the city my whole life, you all know, I've dealt with everybody with, did volunteer fire company and all that good stuff, but now I'm a member of the, actually a member of city staff, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
We welcome you, Scott.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Glad to have yet another resident of Coleson working for us. Scott knew that was coming. Lauren, you didn't know this was coming, but come on forward. It's heck to be an intern sometimes. Come on forward. Members of council, some of you have an opportunity to meet Lauren, but I thought I'd take a moment this evening, since at some point she'll be calling you and asking an opportunity to sit down with you, I thought you might like to know who she is. This is Lauren Strapp, she is an intern with us this summer, she is a student at William &amp; Mary, and at this point in her career path, she's trying to discern whether or not city and county management is the right thing for her, which I've encouraged her that it is a great job if you just have to find a great place. And with that, Lauren, would you like to say anything?
I'm really excited to get to know the city of Coleson and all of you, and I look forward to talking to all of you one-on-one later this summer. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
We look forward to it, Lauren, and like I said, that's thrilling to have somebody that's really interested in getting into municipal government, and you'll find Coleson's an easier place than some to work, and, but, we're not perfect, but we try to be.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, with that said, now is time on the agenda for the audience for visitors. If anybody would like to address council on any subject, now is that time. Okay? Seeing none, no speakers there for audience for visitors, and ask that council has had a brief discussion on modifying the agenda and to add a item to the agenda this evening, and if I could get a motion to do that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we add on to new business, item four, to discuss the joining of the Virginia Extension Service.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, that we modify the agenda to add a resolution to join the Virginia Extension Services. All right, any questions or comments? Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, and now we have a series of public hearings to go through, and we'll start with the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, the approval of the minutes, the regular session of May 14th.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, make a motion now, we approve the minutes from the regular session of May 14th, 2012.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve the minutes, and any questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Abstain.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, and the reason for the abstention is?
I was not present, I did watch it on TV, and I did read the minutes, but I think normally we have abstained in those conditions.
Okay, that's fine. And then the work session of May 14th?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the work session of May 14th, 2012.
Second.
Motion made, and second, that we approve the work session minutes as well, as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Abstain.
Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Okay, and now, not that I was trying to move us along on a, on a fine end of the, now we're into the area of the public hearings, and I guess the first one is an ordinance amending Article 1, Section 1 Tac 04 and 1 Tac 08 of Site Plan Ordinance by adding provisions to allow commercial parking areas to consist of pervious materials and to add a definition for pervious surfaces. And this is a first reading. Presentation on this?
Kevin? Members of council, you'll recall, we had a work session a few weeks ago on this subject. Kevin, if you could just do a summary of the item, it's okay to summarize all three, although we will need to consider each public hearing separately and act accordingly.
Yeah, as you can recall from your last meeting, we had the work session item on this and discussed these changes, they were approved by, recommended for approval at Planning Commission in April, for your consideration now. And it's, we're amending the Site Plan Ordinance to include a definition for pervious surface, ultimately to permit the use of pervious and permeable parking surfaces in commercial parking lots. And that's the first ordinance in the first public hearing. We're defining a pervious surface as a covering or a soil treatment that allows stormwater runoff to infiltrate into the soil below. Pervious surfaces must be designed in accordance with all applicable VDOT and Virginia Water Quality Standards and specifications, and in accordance with good engineering and industry practices, or standards, excuse me. Additionally, we will be adding permeable and pervious surfaces as a permissible parking surface in commercial lots, and that language, and this includes a small amendment by Councilman Green to change Portland Cement, as it read, in the Site Plan Ordinance to Portland Cement Concrete. It goes on to read pervious and permeable parking surfaces may be used upon the approval of the city engineer. Additionally, the submittal and approval of a perpetual maintenance agreement shall be required prior to the installation of any pervious surface. And that's for the Site Plan Ordinance. Additionally, that same pervious surface definition will be used in the zoning ordinance and in the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you, Kevin.
So all three of these ordinances deal with the discussion that Kevin briefed, we won't have to go through an individual.
That's correct.
Presentation on each one. Okay, with that said, this is a public hearing and the first reading, and I would open the floor to anybody in the public that would like to address council on this ordinance. Okay? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and consideration by council, do we want to go through on this, on the first reading, and basically take a sounding of where we are, we're going to see it a second time. I'll ask for a motion to.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Will this require, I know in residential, you still have to put the concrete apron, and I think it goes back 12 feet, and will, for new parking lots, businesses that are going to be on pervious, will it require the same?
Apron?
Apron.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the Site Plan Ordinance by revising Article 1, Section 1 dash 04, to include a definition for pervious surface in Section 1 dash 08 B6 to allow pervious pavement in commercial parking areas.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we adopt the ordinance, and again, this being the first reading. Any questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.
I'd like clarification from Councilman Green, is it Portland?
Portland Cement Concrete, it's all three words.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, the second public hearing this evening is an ordinance amending Article 2 of the subdivision ordinance to include a definition of pervious surface. Again, this is the first reading, and with that said, I'll open the public hearing for any comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of an ordinance amending Article 2 of the subdivision ordinance to include a definition of pervious surface.
Second.
Motion made, and second, that we approve the ordinance to include a definition of pervious surfaces under Article 2 of the subdivision ordinance. Questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
And the next ordinance is an ordinance amending Article 1, Section 1 Tac 3 of the zoning ordinance to include a definition for pervious surface. This also is the first reading. And with that said, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no speakers, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 1, general provision, Section 1.3 of the zoning ordinance to include a definition for pervious surface.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we adopt the ordinance, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, thanks very much, council, and that's all of the public hearings for the evening. Unfinished business, we have an item, next item on the agenda is a resolution making appointments to the school board, is anybody prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making appointments to the school board with the following names inserted, from the central precinct, Yale L. Whitaker, term will expire June 30th, 2015, from the eastern, Robin C. Sidner, her term will expire June 30th, 2015, and from the at-large position, Stephen S. Cast, whose term will also expire June 30th, 2015.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made, and second, that we make appointments to the school, to the school board, any questions or comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Before we leave that, all three of these candidates are tremendous additions, two of them are basically reappointments, and then Ms. Whitaker, I'm sure, will do a great job on the school board. And the school board, by far, is, I would say, more in tune with council than I've ever in my, in my experience on council been, so very pleased with their work. Next item is new business, and first item here is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spain Commercial for the construction of the Public Works Administration Building and the ordinance appropriating funds for the same.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you will recall, several months ago, we had a fire at our administration building in the front of the Public Works Building, that was essentially a trailer that had been there quite some time. We absolutely got our money's worth out of it, but it did burn and was declared a total loss. What we tried to do, and what we have done, is to use a combination of the money that we saved from the larger building that we recently constructed, you knew that for a number of factors, we were going to bring that budget, that project in under budget, which we did, add to it the insurance money that we received for the fire, and also essentially add a little bit of money out of existing appropriations in Public Works to make it work. We were trying to be all-inclusive so that you knew exactly what we're doing, we may have been confusing, so if you'll indulge me for a moment. The contract is for $228,800 to Spain Commercial, that happens to be the company that built our other Public Works Building. The difference between that number and the total number you see in the bottom of the first paragraph, or the third paragraph, excuse me, of 254, 830, that's the total project. In order to bring this project in, there's some of the work we had to do ourselves, or we had to farm out in different ways. So I'd like to commend Bob, not only Bob, but all the people that worked with him, Teresa and Tom, Ken and Jim, and an army of people that worked hard to get this done. Bob, what did I miss that was important?
I just want to thank the opportunity to construct this building. It won't be a trailer, and it's engineered for a lot higher wind load and storm loading with a permanent foundation, and I think it'll be a good asset to the Public Works area.
Okay.
How big is the building, Bob?
Same size as the existing, 40 by 60.
40 by 60.
It's got a reconfigured floor plan, because trailers really don't allow for much of a floor plan, and this would be a lot more effective use of the space.
Any other questions?
Is this going to replace the equipment that was in there?
This is just structure.
Just a structure.
Equipment is a separate insurance item.
Any other questions? Not, I think that this is something that council, the Public Works compound in general, is something that the city had long overlooked, and I think we're really doing well down there. I'm sure that our new employee, Mr. Holloway, will be looking for a new garage here pretty soon, but, but he won't get one. But, but other than that, thank you for the work you've done on this, Mrs. Peaceley, and I'll ask for consideration by council. Am I prepared to make a motion? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Spain Commercial Incorporated for construction of the Public Works Administration Building.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we replace the building that we lost due to fire in the public, Public Works compound. So any questions further? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, and the next item under new business is resolutions required by the Virginia.
Thank you.
We have to do the ordinance.
There's two items there, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's an ordinance behind the resolution.
Again, it's the end of May, I was trying to move us along. Okay, so I'll ask for a motion on the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers to fiscal year 2011-12.
Second.
A motion made, and second, that we approve the ordinance, not just the, just the resolution. Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zeros.
Okay, about now.
Okay.
Okay, all right, now I'd like to move to resolutions required by the Virginia Retirement System. And Randy, you want to give some brief explanation of this?
I will briefly summarize them, Teresa will make faces at me if I miss anything important, and if you have questions between Teresa and I, I think we can answer them. The first two are further ratification of decisions that you've already made in the adoption of the budget process. The first pertains to the choice that we chose as part of the budget process to ease into the newer, higher VRS rates, the idea that we could use 70% of the new higher word certified rate, or the existing rate, whichever was higher, for us, that was the former. And so the first resolution simply codifies that decision in conformance with the code requirements. The second resolution pertains to the choice that we made, that you made as part of the budget process, to go ahead and push to the employees the full 5% VRS funding requirement with a commensurate required 5% pay increase, which was also required by the Code of Virginia as we went up towards the 5%. The third of the three resolutions, because they want to make sure in the law that school boards and boards of supervisors or city councils remain on the same page, they've asked us to, to pass a concurring resolution for the school board's decision. This affects not the school board instructional staff, but a certain small subset, which are administrative staff, non-instructional, I think there are less than 20 of those in our school system. What the school board's decision was, because that number was so small, that rather than to pay the 70% of the new rate, that they would go ahead and move to the, fully to the new rate for next year. And those are the three items, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Okay.
The only question I have, Randy, is what is that number behind the city of Coleson? Is that some number the state assigned us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for those that are watching at home, this is basically, so that nobody gets lost here, want to be out front with everything, this is, the state of Virginia did pass a law this year to require that the employees pay 5% of their VRS, and in return for that, that the cities would give them a 5% raise. Actually, for our employees, that would have worked out where their actual pay, take-home pay would have been less.
Yes.
Than normal, so in addition to that 5%, we actually came up with a small fractional percentage to make sure that nobody's take-home pay was reduced. So that's, that's the thing in a nutshell, this is just the city's ratification of what the state has said we must do. So with that said, I have a motion to approve the first resolution.
Mr. Mayor, we make a motion that we adopt a resolution certifying the contribution rate for the employer contribution to the Virginia Retirement System.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we adopt a resolution certifying the contribution rate for the employer contribution to the Virginia Retirement System. Any questions or comments? Judy, please.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, motion on the second resolution, this would be the resolution certifying the member contributions for current employees and a corresponding salary increase as provided in Chapter 822 of the 2012 Acts of the, Acts of the General Assembly, Senate Bill Number 497.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion made, and second, that we approve that resolution, questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
And a motion on the final resolution concurring with the school division's election to pay the VRS board-certified rate.
No movement, sir. Second.
Motion made, and second, and questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much, and the next item under new business is a resolution electing not to participate in the Line of Duty Act Fund.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, forgive me if my explanation is a bit hard to follow. The reason for that is the fluid nature of the state definition of irrevocable. Some time ago, the state government felt it was appropriate to provide enhanced line of duty death benefits to public safety professionals and their families, and certainly we would all agree with that wholeheartedly. At that time, and for several years, the state took that on as a state-initiated mandate, and they paid for it. In 2010, they redefined irrevocable to apply only to the benefit and not who funded it, and they began the process of shifting that to us. At that time, the option, the only option that we had in terms of fund management was VRS itself. In subsequent General Assembly session, they provided an option to, for localities to continue to provide the benefit through the VRS affiliation, or to choose VACO or VML. And over the past year, localities have looked at their profile in terms of the current claims they have and the ones that they are likely to see. You never can foresee the unforeseeable, but have begun to spread out in terms of where they're going. A decision to not participate in the fund in no way eliminates the benefit from our public safety professionals, it's just a choice of how we manage that benefit, and we are recommending today that we go not with the VRS fund, because we are approaching another one of those irrevocable deadlines, which is we neither needed to be in with VRS or have made another choice by the end of June, and we have come to you, and we would ask your consideration to end our affiliation with the VRS pool, and we'll pick it back up with VML. The coverage will be seamless for all of our employees, in no way is their coverage changed or endangered by this change, it is only essentially who is our reinsurance carrier.
So, and to cut through to a couple of the acronyms that you used there, VRS is the Virginia Retirement System, Virginia, VML is, instead of being covered by the Virginia Retirement System, we're going to cover them through the Virginia Municipal League.
Yes, sir.
Rate of insurances, and basically, that's a decision that we will be, be able to make each year?
The, once we make the decision to be out of VRS, then, then we are with VML. It remains to be seen whether, what happens if we want to transfer between VACO and VML, I'm not sure we know that at this point, but the VRS choice is one of those irrevocable I'm not sure we know that at this point, but the VRS choice is one of those irrevocable state choices that we have to make by, by the end of next month.
Okay, so we're keeping our, keeping our options open, and-
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have one other option, which is self-funding, sort of become our own insurance company. Given our size, I think that that's, same reason that we don't self-insure for health insurance, would be why this would not be an option, we recommend, but Theresa's right, that is, that is the fourth option.
Okay. Questions or comments of council? If not, can we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution making it irrevocable until the state changes the definition of that collection not to participate in Line of Duty Act Fund.
Second. A motion made and seconded that we not participate in the Line of Duty Act Fund through Virginia Retirement System. Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of five to zero.
Now, we have the new item that we added previously, and this is the resolution to join the Virginia Extension Services. Anybody prepared to make a motion, then we can discuss.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I think the motion should be to authorize, the resolution should be to authorize the city manager to take steps necessary to join the VPI Extension Fund. I believe there'll be some administrative step to be taken.
I move what he said. I second.
Did you get that?
I got it.
Okay. And you seconded what he said.
I seconded what he said.
Okay, all right, so, basically, the motion on the floor is that we do join the Virginia Extension Services and give you everything that we, that you need to make that come to fruition. So, now, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, and it wasn't asked when we had Mr. Norton down here at the last meeting, at the work session, but they talk about fifteen point seven percent is the seventy-five hundred dollars, somewhere around there, but we never asked the question, how many bodies does that give Pecosin to enter into their three programs? So, in your discussions with him, could you possibly ask that question?
I will.
So, be sure when, when people in town hear that we're entering into programs with the Extension Services, especially the master gardeners, there'd be questions about how many annually, or however often the program is run.
Okay.
So, we can give them answers.
I will clarify, he made a statement in response to a question, which is, was, as I interpreted it, that there would be no internal quota between the members. So, I guess it would be first come, first served. I will clarify that. Also, we will sign a year annual re-upping agreement, so if our experience doesn't match our expectation, we'll have a chance to renegotiate.
Aye.
But I'll, I'll take care of it in both, both directions.
Very good, and by joining the Extension Services, it gives us a whole lot more than just the master gardener's program. 4H, I know, was a big part of it, as well as some help on some things that we have on our plate, which includes TMDL calculations and the like, so, seems like a seventy-five hundred dollars well-spent, and we'll proceed on with that.
I think it also includes the opportunity for residents to consult with the, with the department on any particular issue that they have in their own properties, which is a real benefit, too.
It's a wide program that's offered, and it's a good thing, you know, for us all.
Okay, so we have the motion made and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote of five to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, and we are, comments of the city manager?
I only have two things this evening, Mr. Mayor. First is to remind members of the public that may be interested, that this coming Saturday is the Pecosin Clean the Bay Day. We're looking for volunteers to help beautify Messick Point, clean trash debris from the shoreline, near the Cove, near Cove Road. We would encourage volunteers duly outfitted in safety boots and work gloves to join us, and plenty of bug spray at this point. For more information, please call Mel Inslee at Parks and Recreation at 868-3580. The other item simply is to take a moment, as I complete my third year here with you later this week, simply to say once again, thank you for the opportunity to be your city manager. And that's all I have, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Vernal?
Yeah, just one thing. Couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, there was an article in the paper about Newport News going to some alternative fuels with their fleet, and one of the things that I found interesting was that they received a federal grant, I think of about $6,000 per vehicle, to convert to the alternative fuels. Been a lot written about in discussions about alternative fuels as probably something that's going to be happening more and more as, as we seek to cut down on petroleum use, and I just suggest that we kind of monitor what they're doing, pick their brains, and see how it works out for them, and see if it ever has any possibility that it's something we may want to look into, but at least we'll have a good model to know the problems and the possible benefits of it.
Yeah, so, item, item to add to the watch list, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
To watch, watch and see how their experience goes.
Yeah.
Okay. Buddy?
Just like to welcome Lauren and Scott to the city. Glad that you're a permanent employee now. Lauren, looking forward to working with you. And also, the turnout at the last food bank drive was fairly low. I'm going to provide some signs that may help, but I think it's a problem of advertising. The first month, we sent out a mail, and I'm not suggesting that we do that every month, it's way too expensive, but if y'all have any ideas as to how we can get the word out, we're going to ask the churches to put it in their bulletin the week before, the Sunday before, maybe that'll help.
I have an idea.
Yes, sir.
We did a citywide mailing, and you're right, that was, that was somewhat costly, but if people who participated, participate each month, wouldn't mind being added to a mailing list. We can certainly do a smaller mailing to the people that have been participating each month to remind them, that would be much more cost-effective, maybe it would help them.
All right. That's it. Frank?
Just one thing, I asked to acknowledge the American Legion Post 273 for their service yesterday, and a special thanks to two organizations, the Fire Department for bringing down a whole bunch of chairs, which made it a lot more comfortable for a lot of people who were there for the, for the service, and also, the Camp High School Junior Naval ROTC. They've been out there for years, as far as I can go back and remember, putting the flags around the center of the ceremony place, and the program's going away, so I don't know what's going to happen to, who's going to be holding the flags in the future, maybe New York High School, but with their Air Force ROTC program, but these high school students from TAB did a great job over the years, and we should, you know, appreciate it.
Well said, and the gentleman that leads that program watched him for years, come down, does a great job, and I think at a minimum, we should send them a letter thanking them for their service. Frank, do you have a concept of when that program goes away?
Probably into the school year, Jim.
Yeah, this year, and then the person that you're talking about is in charge of it, is moving to York, to some kind of, it's a similar, but it's not a Navy-sponsored program.
Okay, this certainly-
He's going to change uniforms. Yeah, I guess.
Well, certainly, certainly TAB has, has been there for us, and I was thrilled to see the presentation of a scholarship to, to one of the cadets there, so, but we certainly need to, if we'd known that this time, we should have said something right there at the ceremony, but we will certainly follow up. Kerry? Anything?
Well, I just add a little bit to what Frank said. We've had the high school band out there, or that part of them as a volunteer group for years and years, and they do just a super job, and the Children of the American Revolution as a group working there as well this year. Other day, about a week ago, there's an article in the paper about Pecosin, and it talked about the mean, or median housing price, median income level, those kinds of things, and talked about the city, but I don't really think it hit on what is really important here in town, like our high-quality and caliber schools that we have, our public safety, low crime, all those things that kind of make us a community. It talked about property, and it talked about we getting new businesses and stuff, which is all good, but I think what really brings people here is those quality of life things, and just thought that needed to be said. Mr. Wheeler, we thank you for being our city manager.
My pleasure, sir.
You going to talk about Community Day last weekend?
From the last weekend?
Yeah, the weekend before last.
Yeah.
Okay, and the church block party that's going to be in the park this weekend, I think it's from like ten to two, so come out and attend that, and that's all I have.
Okay, and what Councilman Freeman was alluding to was the, the great success that we had at Community Day out here on With Creek Road. We thank all of the city staff that participated and made that a success, as well as the Pecosin Business Alliance. Thought it was a great turnout. The Kiwanis Club, I think, sold more barbecue than they ever have. I was kind of concerned how that might impact, and to my surprise, it actually worked out better than I think they'd ever seen. So, thrilled that it worked that way. We are, we plan on doing more community events. We are a tight community, as everybody knows, and we'd like to, to be together, and we plan on facilitating that from the city's perspective in probably an annual event out there. As well, we're talking about having a Community Day upcoming, this would be different, this would be in June, I believe, mid-June, mid to late June, and we're asking that the neighborhoods themselves consider having, sponsoring block parties for themselves, and that the city would supply trash cans and the like, as well as the refuse collection from those events, and that we would basically have either police or fire stop by and visit and introduce, because one of the big things about a growing community like the city is, sometimes you can grow and become so involved in outside, in, in your activities, that you lose touch with your own neighborhood, and we want everybody to know everybody's name and their neighborhood, and where those weaknesses are, to draw just a little closer, so that we can continue to be the forefront city for being part of a community. With that said, and I'll, I'll point this out to the new employees first, that we have a Mayor's Club, Mayor's Cup, should I say, Mayor's Cup Blood Drive is coming up, and if you haven't given blood for the city, if you, that's not, we're not asking for more tax dollars, this time we're truly asking for your blood. But that is on June 6th, and it's here at City Hall, we will basically transform council chambers into a collection facility, and you can come out and laugh at the mayor if you would like, because the mayor's not a tremendous blood giver, but I do step in there, since they named the cup, and this is a competition between the cities, and the cup here in front of me is, the city of Pecosin was the first recipient of that cup last year, and I would tell you that I challenge all the employees, but not only the employees, but the citizens themselves, to a worthy cause at a time when blood is needed most. So, I appreciate trying to bring it down from that, you know, kind of, that fun thing to get your attention, but it is a worthy cause, and you will see all of us that can give, I'm sure you will see us there volunteering, and if you come late in the day, you'll even see the mayor roll his sleeve up. So, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Theresa, your time in putting that all together. And that is all I have this evening. No work session, no closed session, so I'll ask that we take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we adjourn.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried by vote of five to zero.
Okay, and we are adjourned.